Okay, I just like to take roll call for the board if I know who we have. We have Lloyd Bennett. Mr. Perry, are you there?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Holly Arnold, Holly?
Yep.
Ms. Gregory?
Yes.
Mr. Swilly?
Yes.
Mr. Burke? Here. Dr. Provola?
Yes.
Mr. Widener?
Yes.
Okay, we've got everybody. Thank you. And I'll call them in the order. We'll open with the Budget of Legions. Heather, are you able to put the flag up?
Yeah, I just need to share it, just a second.
You're good to go, Heather.
Thank you.
Okay, there we go. A budget of legions to the flag. For the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand.
And one nation under God.
Invisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. There's a moment there to read that notification.
So this, this is actually for after the meeting. I'll put this back up.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. The first thing I'd like to mention and have for the record is that we held an executive session prior to the meeting tonight. It included personnel matters. Next, are there any comments on agenda items from the public? I believe you can type that in the chat and Mary Jean will unmute you if you have a question for agenda items. Give people a few minutes for a moment. Do we know if Mary Jean's getting anything?
No, there's nothing being written in the chat.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll go on.
Okay.
Enrollments are in the packet on pages three and four. Item five, we have the approval of minutes from the last meeting.
Motion approved.
Second.
And I, Mr. Widener was the second, I believe. Is there any discussion or comments? Okay. Carolyn, are you able to do a roll call?
Yes, can you hear me? This is Arnold.
Yes, it sounds like you have your phone and the computer connected to the audio.
Okay.
Carolyn, can you still speak now because you're muted on the computer?
Carolyn, it still sounds like there's quite a bit of feedback.
Is that better?
A little better.
This is Bennett?
Yes.
This is Gregory?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Dr. Provola?
Yes.
Mr. Swilly?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Widener?
Yes.
Mr. Farn?
Yes. Okay. Move on to the superintendent's report.
So I'm asking for a motion to pass item one, which is to accept Laura Charles's retirement from the high school. With much regret, and I know this was a very hard decision for her to make, we wish her the best and we thank her for all positive influence that she's had on students over the year.
We have a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion. I know I hate to see her go. Children have benefited from her very much.
I'll go along with that.
Anybody else?
Good.
Okay, roll call please.
They're not allowed to speak, they gotta wait their turn.
I just, I just pointing out Laura is on the meeting and she did put her, her video on. So thank you Laura for everything.
You'll be missed.
Somebody like knocked on a neighbor's house three miles away or something, so.
Yeah.
They have their opinion.
Carolyn, are you able to do a roll call?
Yes, this is Bennett?
Yes.
This is Gregory?
Yes.
Dr. Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Dr. Provola?
Yes.
Mr. Swilly?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
This is Arnold?
Yes.
Mr. Widener? Mr. Farn?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on. Committee reports. I believe we had a financial committee meeting.
We did, so this is John, so I can't remember when we met Shane, but it was not too long ago here. So we've been discussing in terms of our, our budget process, so you know, in terms of, we, we obviously at our last meeting, we approved the zero mil increase. So the team's working on trying to identify different ways for additional cost savings. So we're looking to close the current estimated budget gap of about $2.4 million. So investigating ways to do that and how we bring that forward. And I, I think that was about it Shane, whether it was, oh, the bond issuance was the other thing that we're working on. So we are bringing that forward as well. So that was a discussion, the board has already approved that, markets have opened up somewhat in terms of the ability to handle new debt offerings. And so it looks like we're moving forward with that and we have our ratings discussion with Moody's here coming up, I believe, next week.
Correct.
That's all I've got from the meeting.
I think we had a curriculum committee meeting since the last
Okay.
I'm not, okay, yeah, it was just to look at the, the new high school curriculum guide. You'll see that's on the agenda tonight.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, we'll go on to new business. First item is a discussion of Walmart's tax appeal.
So I, I can give an update on this, but I also want to provide the board and the public with an update regarding the budget. When would you like me to do that? Do you want me to do that as part of unfinished business? It's not an item that's specifically on here. So I just wanted to get your input on that before we proceed.
Sure, you can do it now.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and share my screen, so hopefully we can. Are you able to view, hang on just a second? Are you able to see a PowerPoint presentation?
Yeah.
Correct. So during the last board meeting, as John mentioned, we approved the proposed budget. And we had agreed that during this week's meeting, we would come back with some additional information to kind of talk about what the next steps look like. So just as a reminder, the timeline that we are working against tonight, we're going to review a few key highlights from the 2021. Yeah, I think I'm, yeah. Review a few of the key highlights from the 2021 budget. And our objective is to have the board approve the final budget on June 11th to meet the PDE deadline of June 30th. Because of some of the, you know, changes and influences that we're working with right now, especially on the revenue side. I think there is a possibility that we may want to schedule a meeting after the 11th for the final approval. But we'll see how the next couple of weeks go in our discussion. Couple of key factors to keep in mind, the state mandated closures will have an impact on state and local revenue for 2021. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. We've gotten some additional information since the last time we presented. But the magnitude of those changes is yet unknown, so.
Shane, are you, am I the only one, are you supposed to be sharing that PowerPoint?
Yes, is it not sharing?
No.
Okay, hang on just a sec.
I thought you were giving the intro, but it started to look a lot like the PowerPoint.
Yep, it is. Hang on. Let's see. How about that?
Here it comes.
Yeah, good.
Much better. Okay, so I'll just flip this back up. This is the timeline that I just went over that we're working against. And as I mentioned, there are going to be a number of factors on the revenue side that we're going to have to take into consideration that are unique for this year. This slide is exactly what we shared during the last meeting. So at the last meeting, we had a total budgeted expense of $50,536,792. And we were anticipating revenue at $48,171,500. This shows a breakdown of the elements that we consider to be fixed. So these are under contractual obligations and, you know, really have very little opportunity for us to make reductions in those areas. That's an important note because, you know, when you're looking at a total budget of $50 million and $43 million of your budget, you don't have the ability to directly affect, it gives you a very small percentage to work within when you need to look at areas for cost reduction. So what have we been doing over the last couple of weeks? There's really been two, two parts. One has been to look at the expense side and to look at areas where we think there may be opportunities for additional savings. And then the other side is to, you know, work to better understand what the revenue picture looks like for the next, over the next several months. So on the expense side, there are some things that we, you know, feel like we have that will work in our favor. Since the original presentation, we have had two individuals who have made their intentions known to retire. And while it certainly is a loss to the district in terms of their expertise, you know, our plan would be that we would not backfill those positions. And that would allow us to realize some additional savings. There are a handful of other positions across the district that are currently open that had not been filled over the last several months. And we would, in the 2021 year, recommend that we not backfill those positions at this time. We feel like there are some areas of the operation where we can see some productivity improvements and work to consolidate the way that work is being done, which we think could also result in some savings of about $175,000. And then this last bucket of program adjustments, there's a couple of key things that I would say here. These are areas that we've identified that we feel like spending potentially could be deferred. So, you know, areas such as, you know, facilities maintenance, there are some areas where we feel like we could put some projects on hold or ideally potentially be able to use the bond to help us fund. There are areas such as the purchase of textbooks that we feel like we could defer. Realistically, we're kind of kicking that can down the road because we know that at some point in the future, those expenses will be necessary. But we feel like in 2021, we can eliminate those expenses in an attempt to try to help close our gap. There are things such as overtime, how we utilize subs through the, through the custodial team. There's a number of areas that fall within there that have the potential to save us money for the district. On the other side of the expense equation, we are moving forward with the bond, which was not, the debt service associated with this new bond was not in the last budget projections. So we now have added that, so the debt service in year one would be approximately $100,000. Combined, that represents a savings of approximately $1 million. So if we adjust the expense side, that would take us to $49 million and change. So what does that mean? On the revenue side, we still think that there is a potential that there will be a reduction in revenue on the local level. So PASBO, which is the Association of Business Officials for the state, has done some fairly detailed modeling, which has taken into consideration things such as property taxes, earned income tax, real estate transfer taxes, delinquencies, and investment earnings. They've looked at the AFR data for each of the districts in the state for the last several years and have pulled together a model. That modeling projection would result in a potential loss of about $1.5 to $1.8 million for the district. It is significant. But at this time, there, that really is an assumption, it's not confirmed. And I think at this point, we need to think about how we approach the budget with these revenue projections in mind. And so what I have done is I'm going to share with you a couple of different scenarios. So as we talked in the last board meeting, our general fund balance has remained quite stable over the last several years. And in fact, for 1920, we anticipate that this will continue to stay in approximately the same range. So if we were to assume a scenario where we did not see any additional revenue loss, this basically just charts out where we're at with the math. So our current budgeted expenses, we believe are around $49 million at this point. The budgeted revenue is about $48 million. So we currently have a deficit of about $1.4 million. And a starting general fund balance for 2021, around $4 million. That would leave us with an ending fund balance of $2.6 million. And I'm using some just back of the napkin kinds of, you know, calculations here with some assumptions around the fund balance at its starting point. So what is the alternate scenario? The alternate scenario is that we do see some of the projected revenue loss. So again, this would be predominantly on the local level. We are hoping that at the state level, that the basic ed and special ed funding will stay flat. And at the federal level, that we would stay approximately flat. If we were to see a reduction in the local revenue of $1.6 million, just choosing a number that was sort of in the middle of the range that was projected, that would leave us with an ending fund balance of $1 million. Now, as we've discussed, while this sounds like a good number, the thing that we have to be cautious about is cash flow. So as we approach the end of the school year and we have received the majority of our funds, we still have bills to pay in the June, July, August timeframe. And before we start to receive revenue in the September, October timeframe, we have to be cautious that we don't get ourselves into a position where, you know, we don't have the, the dollars on hand to be able to pay our basic expenses during those summer months. So $1 million is certainly less than what we would like to be at, but the good news is that there is certainly some amount of cushion there through the general fund. And, and this is, you know, also a key reason why we want to ensure we don't allow the general fund to drop because we need to be able to have those funds available for cash flow needs. So what are the next steps? We need to continue to monitor state and local revenue projections and adjust accordingly. I think it is highly likely that we will not have firm numbers by the time this budget needs to be passed. So I think that's important for us to, you know, kind of communicate, make sure that everybody is on the same page, that we will probably need to make some assumptions when we pass our final budget. We need to monitor state legislation regarding property taxes. There are definitely a lot of things that are happening at the state level regarding property taxes. Things as due dates for face, due dates for discount periods. There's some effort underway at the state level to make some adjustments that would affect the entire state versus a particular county or a particular municipality. And then finally, make any necessary expense adjustments in response to the revenue projection. What my recommendation would be is that we come back at the next meeting, which is in two weeks, and we share and discuss a variety of items that may need to be considered in order for us to respond to any sort of revenue loss that could come in the future. So we need to really be prepared to be able to be agile so that if we learn of revenue shortfalls, that we are in a position to be able to respond accordingly. Questions?
Shane, I've got one question on your, on your potential revenue loss slide.
Yes.
You have a potential revenue loss of $1.6 million. If we're off by 2% in our budget, then our fund balance will be zero, essentially. If we're just off by 2% on the revenue, correct?
That's right.
Okay. Okay, this is worrisome.
Very much so.
I think it's, it's worth noting that this is not just a tuncanic problem. Like that same PASBO report came out and the districts across the state, it's over a billion dollars that they're estimating the budgets could be short. So there's not, can't get blood from a stone.
And the only other thing I would add is, I mean, this demonstrates too that we can't use up our $4 million fund balance in this upcoming year. So we want to take some risk and use that because that's what that fund balance is there for. But we can't take it to zero because this is obviously a year we realized why we have to carry somewhere around the 10% of our operating revenue as a fund balance.
And this budget projection for what our expenses will be next year, where there have been these cuts, like those discussions that we have in two weeks, those are going to be very difficult. That, that we're actually talking about cutting things that vary in their importance to different people, so. Correct.
Yeah, it's definitely painful things to think about. Unfortunately, we're going to have some pain.
Anything else?
No, thanks for looking at this Shane, appreciate the work.
Absolutely, I mean, and, and I want, you know, you to know as a board and the public to know that there certainly has been a lot of scrutiny that we have placed against this. And, you know, we certainly appreciate and recognize the, you know, the situation that we're in and want to be able to provide the appropriate guidance so that we can all move forward and know that we're doing the best we can to educate our kids.
Thank you. Do you have an update on the Walmart's tax appeal?
Yes, I'm going to stop sharing this. So I wanted to just provide the group with a quick update. Back in the fall of 2019, Walmart appealed their tax assessment. The process is for them to make a presentation and, and present their case to the review board, which is made up of our county commissioners. The, at that time, their appeal was denied. They appealed that decision and we are now at a point where we are working to come to ideally an agreement with them on a new assessment. The original assessed value for the property was significantly higher than what they proposed. We have made a counter offer and we've worked over the last several months through our representation to come up with a number that would be mutually agreeable. Obviously, the majority of this work was happening prior to the school closures and the COVID-19 pandemic. So I think at this point in time, we're at a different place than we were when some of these original conversations were happening. The number that at this point, they've agreed to is an assessed value that comes in, I believe, at about $1.5 million. They were at about $1.9 million. And again, that's assessed value. That represents a loss to the district of about $36,000 approximately in revenue. So we are kind of at a crossroads and I'm looking for some discussion and some guidance from the board around what the next steps would look like. If we want to, go ahead.
Well, this is Robin, I don't, with everything that's going on and other businesses are closed and they're one of the few businesses open, there's no way in the world I'm supporting a tax cut for. So whatever they want to do it, you know, just write me down as a hard enough.
I'm with Rob.
Okay. That appears to be the general consensus. Is there anyone who is opposed to going back to Sweet Stevens and, you know, having that dialogue and asking them to continue to have that conversation with them?
Yeah, but I'm in the camp, at least we try to negotiate a little bit of extra time here until we see how bad it'll be Shane. You know, so even if we get a few week delay, we'll have some better information to see where things are. But we'll see.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I agree with the more time, I just think that we are under the gun to make decisions and votes and recommendations and we don't have good data. So it's really difficult because we're going to go down an emotional road and, and we're going to be making decisions and having discussions without completely accurate data.
Sure.
So I, I think if we can drag it out a little bit to, I mean, ask for some more time, I, I think that would help us.
Okay. Okay. Very good. I will take that information back and we'll work with that and I'll come back in a couple of weeks with an update.
Thank you Shane.
You bet.
The next item, new business, is looking to approve the lieutenant immediate units policies and procedures. Motion approved. Departments. As listed on page 38.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a second, thank you. And discussion. Very none, we have a roll call, Carolyn? Carolyn, can you do a roll call?
Something, Shane is also muted and can't unmute herself right now. So Carolyn might not be able to unmute herself if Shana can't.
Mary Jean, can you unmute Carolyn and Shana?
Working on it, I did.
I didn't mute either of them, so I'm working on it. Hang on.
She's muted. She's nodding her head yes. There she goes.
Yes, I'm here now, yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Dr. Pabola?
Yes.
Mr. Swelly?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett?
She's muted.
She's muted, but she's nodding her head. Mr. Whitner?
Yes.
Mr. Farr?
Yes. Thank you. Next item, item three, high school course guide, selection guide. Holly, you said this is what you reviewed in the curriculum committee?
Yes, there was a new poetry class and I forget off the top of my head what the other one was. But both of them were done with existing programs at no cost.
It was a science course.
Science. There you go.
So Holly, your recommendation is to go for it?
I suppose, sure.
Okay, we have a motion.
Motion to approve.
In a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
I have a couple of questions. If we're gonna approve some new courses, what are we eliminating and how is that going to even out with, we don't know the what ifs come fall? Are, what are we substituting for what? How is it all gonna work?
It sounds, Lori, like the two elect, they're both electives.
Okay.
So I, my guess is that we'll just see, we'll see what the response is. And, you know, if they get more response than, say, another class, then we would run them instead of the other class.
Okay.
There's only so much time in the day.
Right.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, Carolyn, can we do a roll call, please?
Mr. Perry? Dr. Pabola?
Yes.
Mr. Swelly?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Gregory?
Yes.
Mr. Whitner? Mr. Farr?
Yeah. Okay, last item I have on the agenda is the school calendar.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna share my screen and show you the first run at this. So, um, this is a proposed school calendar for you to start having discussions around. And so what you can see there is that we would bring the teachers back the week of August 17th. We would give them four days of in-service consecutively. The reason for that is we think things are going to look a lot different and that we're really gonna need that time together and depending on what it is that we can do. And then the students would start back on the 24th of August. On the Labor Day weekend, we would dismiss early on Friday. They would have Monday off. October 28th would be the, the end of the first marking period. There'd be a half day on October 30th, early dismissal. Parent-teacher conferences would follow on November 5th. November 25th, the day before Thanksgiving, we'd have an early dismissal. And the reason that I put the 30th in is because it's still in the support staff contract that they would have those days off. So that's a contractual thing. Then Christmas, we would have off the 23rd, 24th through the 1st. The end of the second quarter would be January 15th and we would have a teacher in-service day on the 18th. In February, we'd have an early dismissal. Again, we're gonna continue with our ed camp program, so that's what we would be doing on this day and this day. On the end of the third quarter would be January, or March 22nd, we would have parent-teacher conferences on the 25th. These are days we would be off for Easter. These would be alternative snow days. And then we, our last day would be May 28th.
Heather, what was the first day for students again?
August 24th.
Okay.
And then, you know, instead of the long weekend, I, I put in the 4th as a half day, early dismissal before Labor Day.
And when did you say the last day would be?
May 28th.
I certainly love the idea of getting out as early as it, and normally I'm in favor of an earlier start. I'm wondering if that may work against us this year, given, maybe we might give more time for any social distancing restriction or requirements to ease.
Well, we're going, if, if we can't open, obviously, then we would have to adopt a new calendar. If we can open and we can do it safely, then this is what I propose.
So Heather, are you gonna send this out? Because this is the first time, obviously, we're seeing.
Yes.
I, I don't, whoops, sorry. Yeah, sorry, going back and forth.
Yeah, John, I, this, this was a crunch to get this in and I actually didn't put the final touches on it till today. So I will send it out to you guys and we can vote on it at the next meeting.
Okay.
But this is what I have so far.
Great. Because off the top of my head, that'd be the only thing I would see is what Phil had said with us finishing so early with, we'd have, we had to discuss it and I just would want to take a look at it. Like, I sort of think we would just bump everything back a week, have the teachers come the 24th and then have the students start the week after, just to give a little more time. But let's discuss it. You've obviously put a lot of thought into it, so I'll take a look at it and we can, we can chat.
And, and I originally, when I first started this, working on this, I, that's the way I had it, John.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. All right, sure thing, I'll send it out.
The only other thing I was thinking about is, I, I'd like to talk a little bit about what snow makeup days would look like because by the end of this, I think we've gotten pretty good at, well, we, we know a lot more about educating from afar than we did a year ago. So I sort of would want to understand what could be put in place so we don't have any snow makeup days and whatever calendar we publish is one we finish with.
Yep. And I have a plan. I, I do. I don't mean to sound like Elizabeth Forman, but I do have a plan and I.
Well, that's appreciated.
Yeah, so, and I will share that with you.
Okay, great.
Okay? All right, sure. All right. So what I would like to do, Phil, if it's okay with you, before the public comments, is give the public an update on where we are. Okay? All right. So I don't know what I just did here. Um, so I want to go back to this. And then I want to share my screen, talk myself right through this. Okay, so this is a slideshow that I just put together for, to give the public some updates. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay. So first thing I want to do is shout out to Katie Wosnaski because she is one of the 12 finalists for the PA Teacher of the Year. I called her this afternoon. I said, I've never talked to anybody that made it to the 12 finalists. So I just want to say congratulations. She's gone through three different rounds of competition. They're down to 12 teachers and just to make it this far is such an honor. It's an honor for her. It's an honor for our district. And so Katie, I am really proud to know you and work with you and I, I know that you're thrilled and excited and we're all thrilled and excited for you.
Yes.
I also want to shout out, we had three kids that were named to the Scholastic Superstars for the Times Tribune. I don't know that we've ever had three kids before. Sophie Burke, Thomas Elias, and Hannah Lee Nichols. So I, you know, it's easy to like overlook the really good stuff that's going on, but I wanted to, to start out today with some really positive news. So I wanted to give those guys a tribute as well. So we started planned instruction on May 4th and that will run through June 5th. And the, I, you saw these slides last time. All students are expected to participate and participation is being tracked. There will be no final exams. Grades for the quarter will be pass and pass/fail. And grades for the quarter will not be calculated into a GPA because I don't know how you put a pass/fail into a GPA. We, the expectations for passing are that students will do 70% of the work and that they will participate 70% of the time. So I know that's a little ambiguous for some folks, but we're in very ambiguous times right now. So what we need is kids online doing their very, very best. That's what we need. If you have chosen the paper pencil option, you can submit electronically by email or we do have drop boxes set up at the admin buildings on, on Monday when we distribute paper pencils for K to 7. There are drop boxes at the high school for 8 through 12. And then we'll make sure that the teachers get that, that material. June 5th is the end of the school year. So that, that is all pretty much review. I wanted to give you an update on the deployed devices. At this point, we have deployed 600 devices. We have 22 hotspots that were distributed yesterday. I don't know if any district besides ours is getting these kinds of numbers, but I gotta tell you something. I am so proud of our teachers. I am so proud of this admin team. I'm proud of our parents and I'm proud of our kids because this participation rate far exceeds anything that I've seen in other districts or heard about. So hats off to you teachers, hats off to building principals, the administrators. You are doing an awesome job. I am really proud to be affiliated with you. We're gonna continue with food distribution. That happens every Tuesday. We're gonna do that throughout the course of the summer as long as the supply is there. We will continue to use our facilities and our admin team as volunteers and make that available to families in need. Some events that are coming up virtually, I, so Monday, or Sunday, May 17th, the Sunday at 2 o'clock will be the Senior Academic and Athletic Awards. On next Wednesday, or, no, it wouldn't be next Wednesday, it'd be the 27th, so two Wednesdays. That will be the honors banquet at 7:00 PM. And on June 3rd, which is also Wednesday night, at 7:00, we will be doing our senior awards. And those links will be available on our website so that you can be part of those events. We'll make all of that stuff available. So we have done a locker cleanout at the high school and that is completed at the high school. And all of the, well, I shouldn't say all of it, but a lot of, most of the kids came and got their stuff. If they, if you haven't yet, please get ahold of Mr. Bosher and make those arrangements. The intermediate center lockers have been cleared out, but their distribution will take place next week. So stay tuned and we will get that information out, how that is going to work. After we get that done, then we'll be going to the primary center and looking at whether or not there's personal items there as well. So here's our still unknown list. We're, we're making progress on this. We got third marking period behind us, beyond us. We got the end of the year grades, how we're gonna do them. Kindergarten registration is really in step one right now. We have the families, about 130 students that we have so far on the list that are seeking to register for kindergarten. And we've already established the remaining school year calendar. Graduation is still up in the air. We are waiting as long as we can to make a decision on how that's gonna look. And also, we, as Shane said, we don't have any idea what the financial impacts of this closure are going to have on us in this pandemic. I made reference to this before and I, I want everyone to understand, I really had a very, I've really shifted my focus in the last couple of weeks once we got this educational program on the, off the ground. And I, I talked about that article that I had read and sent out to our administrators. So I see right now as a time to pivot. By that, I mean, we, we plant our feet, plant one foot and we turn. And we'd start looking at next year. And I want to assure everybody that we are doing that. I want to assure you that, that there's a, a lot of people associated with this district who are willing to lead and who want to lead. And this is not, as tragic as this time is, there are also opportunities here. And I want to start focusing on those opportunities. Again, I ask you to be patient and be respectful and be kind. We are in very uncharted territory and we are doing the very best that we can. So thank you. So Phil, I, I, as far as public comment is concerned, the rules that we had set up before were that if you wanted to, if anyone in the public wanted to make a comment that they would, or ask a question, that they would place their name in the chat box. And then Mary Jean will unmute that person and they can ask their question.
Before you do that, real quick, just a shout out to Katie Wosnaski. I mean, that's just a fantastic accomplishment. Would be great for our district to have her win that, obviously. So it'd be something that we could really be proud of. So I know Katie's on this call. My daughter was in her class and I know what a fantastic job she does, so thank you very much.
Absolutely.
My kid's in her class and she's a fabulous teacher.
Yep. We know she goes above and beyond with stuff she does inside and outside the classroom. She's always available, no matter when Sophie needed help, she could get ahold of her. So really appreciate it.
Katie, turn on your video. Everybody wants to see you.
Peer pressure.
She's in the PJs.
That's right. All right. All right, you guys. So I put the rules up there, if, if, I can put them up if people need them. But basically, if you have a question, type your question into the chat, or type your name into the chat box and we will unmute you.
While people are doing that, I had, there were two things left on my list I wanted to either ask about or mention. One, while we've been having this meeting, it got sent to me that apparently the governor's office contacted one of our commissioners this afternoon and said that we would be going to the yellow, yellow phase next Friday. So it should be announced tomorrow that Wyoming County will be moving to yellow on the 22nd. So that's, I think, good news and leaves some promise for some kind of non-virtual graduation ceremony. You know, like you said, we're, we're holding out and making the decision late as possible. The other question I had was, do we have a plan to publish the Zoom videos from the meetings?
These Zoom? Hallie, they, they, sorry, they are available. If we want to publish them, we can. I have a link for them.
I think we should, just because a lot of times people are asking questions about the stuff, especially that Heather talks about in her slideshows and giving updates. And we have all the other ones available for poster.
I can ask Joe Forman to mark Simcoe and put him up.
Yep.
I would note that while losing, who was in Bradford County, of course, and there you have, they're paying an outside graduation, but without parents or spectators. They're seating the kids six feet apart and they're limiting the number of administrators. That's in the Rocket Courier today.
Yeah. Yeah, one of the advantages awaiting is we've had the opportunity to see what 50 school districts are doing and then we can pick what we think is a best fit for our district and do it in a safe way. So I know we have to get going on this relatively soon. I think the first stage was moving us to yellow, so once we get confirmation of that, that'll at least give us a little bit better idea of what we can do. And then let's work on, you know, picking that best idea for these kids. Perfect.
And while losing, it's also talking about having a company come in to livestream it for them, so that other folks, they can, parents can see it as well that way.
Yeah, we, we have that capability.
We did that last year and it, or maybe even the year before. It was very well appreciated, much appreciated by a lot of people who wouldn't have been able to make it otherwise.
Right. I don't see anything in the chat. I don't see anybody's putting their name in, Phil.
Okay.
I had one person message me asking me what the plan was for 7th graders to register for classes.
That, that will come. Oh, that, that will come next. So we, we're getting 9 through 12 and then, then we'll send out the 8th grade. So we haven't forgotten them.
Okay.
Mr. Bosher actually has up a link and I believe we sent it out today for 7th graders. He's gonna have a short TED Talk that's recorded.
It is. I just actually sent that email to the person to see.
Okay, thank you. We will be having an executive session on personnel, but we will not be coming back to the board meeting afterwards. Somebody have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Okay, thank you. We are adjourned and congratulations to Katie Wosnaski.
Oh, oh, quick question. I was wrong. They wanted to know if there was any plan for the kids going into 7th, not the 7th that is going into 8th.
Oh, um, yeah, but I, I don't have the specifics on what that, that is.
Okay.
For right now. But yeah, I, I, we're gonna have a plan for every kid.
That's coming.
Coming.
Okay.
Okay.